All right, I have 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
President.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Merrick.
Here.
Councilman Savage.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Proclamations. We have a couple that we're going to present tonight. The first is to American Red Cross. It's American Red Cross Month proclamation. Whereas, we recognize the compassion of people in Cottage Grove and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas, this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering and whereas that kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the southwest Oregon chapter of American Red Cross to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether through delivering shelter, food, comfort during disasters and providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas, we hereby recognize the month of March in honor of those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in the commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore, I Candace Solzby, Mayor of Cottage Grove, Oregon, do hereby proclaim March 20, 2024 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Cottage Grove to reach out and support humanitarian missions. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Cottage Grove to be affixed this 25th day of March 2024. Item B, our second proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas, our children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of Cottage Grove. And whereas, child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effect that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas, protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in safe, stable, nurturing environments. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Candace Solzby, Mayor of the City of Cottage Grove, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Cottage Grove and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Cottage Grove to be affixed this 25th day of March 2024. We now have a presentation from Kids First Children's Advocacy Center. Staff report by Police Chief, Mr. Corey Chase.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month in April, I've asked for Sarah Stewart, who's the Executive Director of Kids First in Eugene, to come and give a presentation, a brief overview tonight of the Child Abuse Advocacy Center in Eugene, and kind of talk to you all about what they do, how they work with kids and families in Lane County, and also specifically what their connection is to Cottage Grove and how they work and network with the Cottage Grove Police Department. So with that, I'm going to ask Executive Director Sarah Stewart to come up and present to all of you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chief. I'm just going to give you a quick primer on Kids First. I look around and I recognize some of you in the room, so great to see you. Kids First, so we have existed in this community. We are located in Eugene, but we serve all of Lane County. So we've been here since 1994, so it's our 30-year anniversary. We've served over 15,000 kids since we opened our doors. And we serve about 600 to 700 children and their families every year. That's a lot, right? It's a big number, but we serve all of Lane County. So when you think about 700 kids, it might not feel like a lot, except when we're only working with families when abuse is reported and law enforcement gets involved. So it's that higher-level criminal abuse. So it's, I think, to have a good understanding of why the work is so important, you have to know what it was like before we existed. And so about half of the kids that we see every year are for concerns of child sexual abuse. And so kids previously might disclose to their teacher or another trusted adult. And then, so they would talk to their teacher, and then they might have to go to the police station and talk to the police, and they might have to go to child welfare and tell their story there, and they might have to go to the emergency room for an exam and tell their story there, and so, and so on. They might have to go to the courthouse and testify there. And so Kids First, this first Children's Advocacy Center was actually created in the late 80s, and we were one of the first 100 advocacy centers to be created after that. And so the idea is that we have medical providers, we staff medical providers, mental health professionals, advocates, interviewers, and more, so that they're all in-house. And then our friends in law enforcement give us a call and say, hey, we have this disclosure that was made. We need you to help with the interviews, the advocacy, the mental health. We even host grand jury hearings at our center so that kids don't have to go to the courtroom. And so all of that's happening in one place. We'd love to show you our space. It's really child-friendly, and actually, it's everyone-friendly. It's really a lovely, warm environment with supportive folks. And then we bring all of these professionals to the child to really help reduce the trauma that kids and families are experiencing when they're going through these investigation processes. We serve 13 different law enforcement jurisdictions, since we serve the whole county. And Cottage Grove is, we serve about 40 kids and their families from Cottage Grove every year, which is actually our highest-served rural area. Our other, I'm from Mapleton, so I'm from a rural area. And our, so the Florence area, we serve about 10 kids a year, so it's really 10 to 12. So it's really significantly, and they're our second-highest rural area. So it's really significantly more kids from Cottage Grove that we're serving every year. And we couldn't do that without our partners at Cottage Grove Police Department. And so, I mean, I could talk about Kids First all day, so let me know if you have any questions. But we're just happy to be here because especially with over half of the kids that we're seeing for concerns of child sexual abuse, that is preventable. A quarter of the kids that we're seeing are for, you know, they've witnessed violence typically in their home. Some of those things are, they're really preventable. And so it's really important that you're having this proclamation and having a chance for us to share a little bit about this work and how it impacts your community. So we just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Drea.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. I just want to thank you for all of the work that you do across the county, and thank you for coming to share that important piece with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only during the hearing. Comments on the agenda items need to be taken prior to the council discussion on that item. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of the citizen comments. Michael Bork.
Hi, my name is Michael Bork. I live at 310 North Douglas. I'll become stranger here. I wasn't really going to come in tonight, but I was driving home and just found it fairly offensive to, if I buy one of the unhoused camps and have three or four shopping carts full of belongings from all over the town. And, you know, I've come in front of this council, I don't know, for last year and a half, on and off, and it's been a blind eye to the citizens of Cottage Grove on what goes on out there. And I just think that going forward, you know, I've presented a few ideas to you guys. They've been shot down. You know, you keep wanting to do things, but it's been, we're in this now for two and a half years, and it's not getting any better. If anything, it's getting worse. What I am asking is that before we renew anything with Carry It Forward or any of the camps, that we come and find and put some things in place. I mean, right now, we pay $165,000 a year for Carry It Forward for 30 people to be out there. About 12% of them work. The other 35% of them are on Social Security. But the other 50%, I'm not sure, looking at the figures that I get from Jake, what the, you know, population, it could be a wife, or it could be kids, I don't know. But there's other towns and cities out here in Oregon that have taken a proactive stance on the unhoused, and it's working for them. And you're going to find that if you don't, you're going to lose the people that actually support this town. And I think there's a lot of people that are here that can't move because they don't have the means to be able to do it or afford to. But the people that can may do, and I don't think that's what you want. It's fine and dandy to bring low income, housing, and all that, but that's not what's going to support the town. What you need to do is, you know, really look at, what do we have going for us? And do we really want to keep going down this road? But to put the unhoused in one area and not put it in other areas of the city isn't right either. And I think going forward, as you look at other camps, other sites, so you can get a better crossfit of your population out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings? I see none. Does sound agenda? Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous motion carries. Resolutions and ordinances? We have none. Business from City Council? A presentation? Sorry? Oh, never mind. It's not your fault. All right. Resolution to amend the purchasing agreement between Axon Enterprises, Inc. and the City of Cottage Grove. Staff report by Police Chief Corey Chase. Oh, yes, I probably should. We don't have anyone signed up. Do I still need to read that? So should we skip to item B in the absence of the chief?
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend that we just move on to item B, and then when we're concluded, hopefully, the police chief will be back.
Sounds good. Item B, a resolution repealing resolution number 1865 regarding adopting council rules and adopting new Cottage Grove City Council procedural rules. Staff report by interim city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. This item has been on the council's work at several, at a work session and at several city council meetings this evening. Our legal counsel is here with us to walk through the final corrections or changes that were suggested at the last meeting. I presented each council member with a red-line version that shows just what those changes were. And then this evening, city recorder has also put a new exhibit A. And my understanding, there were some, some layout changes that she can share. And then Ms. Conley has an item that she changed on it. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to legal counsel, Ms. Conley.
Thank you. That's it. Okay. I wondered why it wasn't echoing. All right, so I know it wasn't in the council packet itself. Some for members of the public, there is a track change version that was distributed later, and I believe it's available if anybody needs to follow along. But I'm just going to walk you through those changes. Interim city manager Stewart was commenting on. So Section 2.2, some close reader pointed out that we were missing a meeting at the end of a sentence. So it's just regular meeting. That was just an edit. Thank you, Counselor Urban. And then moving on to, we go way down here. Appearance of interested citizens on page five, section 11. We broke it out so that, under that Appearance of Interested Citizens, which is not moving in the agenda order of business, we're going to have two items. The first is public comment on items not on the agenda. And the second is going to be items on the agenda. Both of those are going to have individual comments from people who sign up in advance for three minutes or less, depending on how many people sign up and the business at hand. But that just tracked with the consensus direction I received from council in order to reorganize public comment, get it all out at the beginning, let members of the public go home if they wanted to. They can also stay for the rest of the meeting if desired, but it consolidates public comment and hopefully will allow the council to focus on those comments, but then move on with business efficiently. And let's see, so then 11.3 actually is a continuation of why we initiated this rule update in the first place. It's to ensure that members of the public who want to present public comment will sign up in advance. And there's just some word changes around there to accommodate the fact that both types of public comment are going to be held at the beginning of the meeting now. Any questions about any of that so far? Okay, so then Section 14. In an effort to balance between the desire to hear from members of the public, particularly members of the public who may have learned more as they sat through the meeting, but also to acknowledge the fact that we've let everybody have an opportunity to speak on items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we changed action item public comment. So if time permits, the presiding officer will be able to allow such comment. We're hoping that altogether, it won't exceed 10 minutes. And again, each individual comment, we're saying up to three minutes, which the council could limit further if it desired to. So hopefully, that reflects the direction that I received. I also added some of the language that we discussed about not repeating prior comments in order, again, to just promote efficiency, but to make sure that you hear all the concerns from the members of the public that there may be. Then we jump forward to 22.2.1, page 10. I just changed that language because I recognized that 11.3 already includes the requirement to sign up in advance, so I didn't see the need to repeat it. So I consolidated that requirement. And that then leads me to the change that we just made today. It's literally a formatting change in section 24.5 and 6. So what we did, and do you have that revised version in front of you? Okay, so 24.5, we now have a 24.5.1 talking about use of personal social media accounts to present city information. And then there's a 24.5.2 about personal social media accounts and personal opinions. And then a 4 point, sorry, 24.5.3, that there was one sentence that was repeated in both of those subsections that described what personal social media is, and it includes blogs, Twitter, Facebook, all forms of electronic communications media. I didn't want that repeated, again, just in an effort to consolidate and simplify. So that's all that happened there. It just looks a little different, but the substance is identical to what you had all reviewed before. And under my, the city attorney report at the end, I'll talk a little bit about how this change is consistent with a recent Supreme Court case. I think that's all that we did. Mindy, did you want to talk about that change further, the formatting modification?
It was really rather simple. I just added exhibit A to the top, played with margins a little bit, underlined the rules, the numbered rules, so that they match what was done in the past. And then carried 2024 down to the bottom in the footer, where it says council procedure rules. I dropped the date down below, so really just layout changes.
And so therefore, it is set up as, you know, the revised version can be the exhibit A to the resolution that was already on the packet. So that concludes my report.
Do we have any questions? I just wanted to, I thought this was kind of fitting. I have Darrell Williams, old city councillor and past mayor from Cottage Grove, gave me his 1965 charter from Cottage Grove, and you see how thin it is. And this is, I wanted to show this real quickly because I especially thought Carrie might get a kick out of this. This is how they used to revise the rules.
I could do that.
Yes. So I thought that was pretty cute. So, all right. Yeah. All right, we're going to go back to resolution A. Resolution to amend purchasing agreement between Axon Ent- Yes. Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, we do. Entertain a motion, resolution number? 1865?
This resolution number is going to be 2130, which is going to repeal 1865.
2130 to repeal. Counselor Urban.
I'd move that we adopt, the council adopts resolution 2130, appealing resolution 8165. And, I don't know where that buzz is coming from. And adopting the rules, city council procedural rules that we have drafted over the course of the last few meetings.
Second, we have a motion with a second.
Clarification, it's 1865, not 8165.
All right. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Merrick.
Aye.
Councilman Dreer.
Councilman Urban.
Aye.
Councilman Stennett.
Aye.
Mayor Solzby.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous. All right. Item A. Resolution to amend the purchasing agreement between Axon Enterprises, Inc. and the City of Cottage Grove. Staff report by Mr. Corey Chase.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so tonight, I'm asking for an amendment to the purchasing agreement with, between the City of Cottage Grove and Axon Enterprises Incorporated. This was an agreement that was entered into in December of 2022 for the purchase of the body-worn cameras and accompanying hardware and software to manage the digital evidence. As we are moving closer to fully staffing our police department, it's time to expand and make sure that we have the necessary body-worn cameras, hardware, and software for all uniformed personnel so we can ensure that all of our police officers working on the street have the body-worn cameras and that we have the proper software to manage and archive the evidence for our, for our non-staff, for our records and evidence specialists. So I am asking for you all to consider adopting that resolution tonight.
Anyone have questions? Counselor Drea.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Chase. At any one time, how many police or uniformed officers do you have working?
Generally, we have anywhere between two and five at a time.
Why would you need, this is asking for an increase in five body-worn cameras?
Right.
Is the nature of them that each person gets one?
Yes, so they're programmed.
And they keep it all the time?
They're programmed for each individual officer. So when the officer comes in to download their video evidence at the end of their shift, all of that stuff is synced to that one officer-specific number. So similar to like what a badge number would be. So when it goes into the digital evidence system, they dock it. And then the, when the evidence specialist get in to look at it, it all automatically downloads for that officer, for that individual officer. So if, like what we had over the weekend, we had one officer that was having issues with their camera not uploading the video or downloading the video properly, they had to use somebody else's for that shift. They also had to send a memo to their supervisor, who then had to send that to evidence. They had to go back in, and what they do is they have to go into each one of those individual pieces of video and then reassign it in the system so it gets archived under the officer's number. So it's extremely labor-intensive for us to do that, which managing this digital evidence program is already labor-intensive. It takes a lot on the back end, and it does increase the workload for our, for our staff to do that. So that's why the, the program is designed and the software and the hardware is designed to be assigned individually to the officers.
Thank you. So the setup is, is designed for each officer to just have one?
Yes.
All the time?
Yes.
And not share, and that's standard practice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion for some of my questions.
I assume we're on 20-
I assume we're on 2131?
We're actually going to be 2129.
That's what I was wondering.
The resolutions and the agenda.
Glad I asked. Metamare moved that the council adopt resolution 2129.
20. 2129. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Well, the recorder, please call the roll.
Hi.
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 Counselor Dre.
Hi.
Counselor Merity.
Hi.
Counselor Stenit.
Hi.
Mayor Solsky.
Hi. Unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item A, Genealogical Society Annual Report, staff report by interim city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening we have with us Deborah Motsev. She is the librarian from the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society. She will present to the annual update of the genealogical society's events and activities and the operation of the library, which is located in the community center. This is just an informational item, so there's no actions expected.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here, Mayor and Council. Do you need me to state my name and my address too? No? Okay. I also was going to welcome Mr. Sourwine. We've had a couple interactions and I had invited him on a walking tour of Cottage Grove. And I invite any of the council to do the same. So many of you have heard my name associated with the history organizations in Cottage Grove, and I wear many hats in that realm of Cottage Grove. But tonight I'm here representing the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society as the president. I've been the president for the past two and a half years. Also, half the time I am the librarian as well. We have had many successes in 2023. The highlight was our second annual Who Are Your Ancestors? Family History Month event. This year, our, in 2023, we had a huge turnout for the event. And at that event, in one day, in six hours, we had 12 guests sign up to be members of our genealogical society. And that's never happened before at any of our events in our 49 years. We also had scores of local residents visit the research library, and we had visitors from 11 counties outside of our county. Five visitor, five states from, we had visitors from five different states and three countries. The furthest away was Australia. Last year it was, or the year before it was Scotland, so we're going around the globe here. In 2023, we continued our two large projects. We are re-cataloging our library holdings and continuing the scanning and indexing project of tens of thousands of Southland County obituaries and life event clippings. And both projects are going really well. We're almost through re-cataloging our collection. And we do have a link to our tiny cat on our website, and our website is cggenealogy.org. And we also have a link to the first about 4,000 names for the scanned and indexed obituaries and life events. The Cottage Grove Genealogical Society is an all volunteer organization. At this point in March, we have 70 members, which include a few family memberships. We have 46 voting members. I recently tallied our 2023 volunteer hours, and we logged 2,687 hours. That number broke our record from last year, and I'm very proud of the work that we do to help patrons and members learn sound research methodology to aid them in their own family history journey. And it doesn't matter where their ancestors come from, we can help them. I'm also proud of the work we do to forward the knowledge of our local history and the people that lived here before us. We are in the process of publishing the third volume of a four volume series about the first settlers who arrived in our area early enough to receive a donation land claim. The first two volumes are available at our library, and the third should be available by the end of 2024. As with almost, as with most all volunteer organizations over the last four years, we are still struggling to get our past level of volunteers to volunteer on a regular basis. That means that the work is being accomplished by a smaller number. And with that comes a risk of volunteer burnout. And so with that said, I want to say we do have volunteer opportunities at the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society, and some can be done at home, and others need to be done at the library. And as I reported last year, the genealogical society had teamed up with downtown Cottage Grove to sponsor the Second Tuesday History Pub. If you haven't attended, please check it out. The presentation for April will be by Holly Turpin of the Historical Society on the regatta that was held at Cottage Grove Lake. And in May, we're going to have a speaker from Jasper, Bert Dunn. He will be talking about Byron Pingra, an early Land County resident who arrived early enough in the Fall Creek area to produce or to procure a donation land claim. He also received the contract to build the military road from Eugene to Oak Ridge. So it's going to be an interesting presentation. And some of you may have heard the name Pingra before because one of the Land County covered bridges still standing is named for Byron Pingra. And so if you missed a history pub, the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society has been doing our best to make sure that the history pubs get filmed. And the ones that did get filmed are on our YouTube channel, and you could go to YouTube and just put CG genealogy. I think there's five up there now, and we do have about four more in the process of being edited. Our research library now has ancestry.com library edition and newspapers.com Oregon collection. And it's on our computers for patrons and members to use. And that was provided by the Woodard Family Foundation through a gift. I also want to mention the loose group of historical organizations in our community called Partners in History. And we've been collaborating to preserve and educate others about our area's history for many years. And last March, I received word from the Woodard Family Foundation that they approved our request for a grant to digitize more of our local newspapers. The grant will advance our access to local newspapers up through 1957. Actually, February of 1957. And that's over 14,000 more pages than what we have access to now. Right now, we're up through 1929. And we hope the University of Oregon will have the additional pages on the historic Oregon newspaper site by the end of this year. And if anyone wants to learn how to effectively search these historic newspapers, I'd be happy to help. In the last two decades, DNA has advanced our ability to discover more about our family, but you still need to do the research so you understand your matches. And last year, we assisted four patrons answering a lifelong question, who's my father? Who's my grandfather? One patron was 89 years old. She asked if we could help her discover something about her biological father. Her parents were married in Chicago, but he mysteriously left her mother before she was born. And she even hired in the 1950s a private detective to try to find her father, and she had no luck. And so we asked her if she was willing to do a DNA test. She did the test, and within just a few hours of getting the results, we could tell her who her father was. And we found a half brother. And she was overjoyed, and they're in communication now. So I think that's a really great success story. And again, I want to thank the City of Cottage Grove, Mayor and Council for all your continued support of all the historic organizations in our community. And I know I've shared this quote with some of you, but I feel it's apropos to share it again. This country is made up of small towns and big dreams, and that's how I feel about Cottage Grove. And so with that, good evening, and together we can preserve today what will be history tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, concerns?
If I might, Mayor, I just add another piece of information. This last week, we had a resident that came into the engineering department looking for some, some construction documents. And this individual volunteered how much pleasure he had working with the genealogical society, actually, Miss Motsev. They were able to locate a grandfather that had rumored, some rumors that weren't very favorable, and actually found that she was able to locate the grandfather, moved to New York and lived there for 30 years. So he was incredibly thankful for her effort in finding the individual and finding out that the rumors that the family had shared for many years were inaccurate, so.
Thank you. All right, concerns from council? Anyone? Counselor Savage?
I gotta push the button. Thank you so much, Mayor Solsky. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bork, for speaking tonight. I appreciate your concern regarding the shopping carts at the camps. I'm sure you will be pleased to hear that we're doing a work session regarding issues surrounding homelessness on Saturday, May 18. And we will be discussing next steps. And so I think that your concern is not alone, and we look forward to having those conversations on what to do and how to move forward. So I thought I'd just throw that out there. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I, I do have something. On January 12th, I sent you all an email, you remember, individually, not together, asking for a consensus, well, asking you to think about it. Because I was going to bring up in the meeting that I would like to look into our recruiter's possible breach of contract on January 22nd. That was the meeting. I was asking for a consensus. I would really like our attorney to look over their contract. They did not give us work history of our candidates, complete work history. I only so far have one counselor, Counselor Urban, has agreed. I was told that it was a personal attack. I assure you, it's not a personal attack. I only believe that we need to do our professional duty as counselors and look into this. It is our job to be good stewards of the city's money. And I'm hoping that in light of potential ethics violations, that we will review GMP's contract for breach of contract. So I would like to go around the council now and see if I have a consensus to do that. Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. The first time that this was brought up, it was not something that I could support because of the reasons being brought up. However, new information has come to light, and I would absolutely support a deeper dive. So you have my support. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Stenit?
Thank you. I can echo what Counselor Savage said. I'd like to know kind of what, what happened. Thank you.
Counselor Dre.
Thank you, Mayor, for, for bringing this up and your leadership on this. I just want to clarify, it's not an ethical violation, it's a public meetings violation at hand, and I do support looking into the contract.
I'm sorry, it was the Oregon Ethics Commission. Okay. Counselor?
Yes, I would like to have that reviewed and in specific in the guiding of the post process.
Thank you.
That led to our investigation.
Thank you. Right, Counselor Urban, you supported it the first time, I'm assuming.
Yeah, just to clarify my understanding, what we were talking about at the time was just to have our city attorney look over what transpired and, and the contract and give us a kind of preliminary assessment. Still support that.
Counselor Flack?
Yeah, I, I do too. I'm more, I'm wondering about timing, if we need to wait for the completion of that, or if we can actually start that. But I do support. You know, it's, it's really disappointing when you hire, you know, consultants that are supposed to guide you through the process. And we didn't end up completely there. So I do think it's worth a review, absolutely.
Thank you. Carrie?
So I, I have good, clear direction to take a look at the contract and look at the background facts. I will take a look at the timing question, just to see if that's something that can proceed now. I, I'm not seeing a reason not to, but I will pause and think about that before moving forward. And then I will coordinate with city manager Sourwine to, you know, however, next step after that, what we're going to do.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Business from the city manager. Report by city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Introm, thank you.
Introm, I'm sorry.
So I would like to point out that city manager, Mr. Sourwine, has been attending or is in attendance with the meeting. I believe that it's approximately 2:00 AM or somewhere in that neighborhood where he's at right now. So thank you for your attendance this evening, Mr. Sourwine. So I just have a few items here. I've made a list. So the first is, just wanted to send a reminder that your SEI filings are due. So just a reminder to council to get those turned in if you haven't. The second is, sign up for the LOC Spring Conference. So if any of the council is interested in attending, please get with Mindy on getting that signed up and taken care of. Next, we received in the mail this, today, I believe, from Pacific Power, our Blue Sky Certificate of Blue Sky Renewable Energy Support. In 2023, I would just share that 2,164,800 kilowatt hours of energy resulted in our support of this program, which equates to the amount of power generated in one year from 3,376 solar panels, so. Just wanted to share that, seems to me that's a significant number of clean energy that's been generated through our participation. Next, I wanted to share that we did close the debris drop off site today. So the staff will be, I believe, late this week doing another sweep in the community to pick up the remaining limbs along the roads or the city streets to try to put that to close. We do still have some piles of debris along the freeway and over at the interchange that once we have the ability to get there, it's dry enough, we will also get those removed and to the chip pile. Next, we will also still be offering firewood for folks to come pick up and also taking delivery of chips. We have a small mountain of chips over at the industrial park on our street that we would really like to deliver to folks that are in need. So they can send me an email at publicworkspwdirector@cottagegrove.org, and I'll get that to staff to get it scheduled. Next, we are cautiously anticipating that the golf course will reopen, hopefully this Friday or this weekend. It looks like the courses, they're frantically mowing it, getting it in shape, cleaning up traps, getting it playable. And hopes that we can take advantage of the next window of really nice weather this weekend. So there's a lot of golfers anticipating the opening, and I'm sure it'll be busy. I received a request earlier, late last week, from the governor's office in regards to our infrastructure funding allocation. They have asked for additional information. I will be sending that additional information off to the governor's office tomorrow. It's answering, there were seven plus questions, and they were just wanting some additional information as to how that money would be spent and the timing and, and the outcome. So I hope to have that to them first thing tomorrow. I would share that the Bohemian Park project is under their construction documents or under the review, the 100% documents. As soon as we have the approval to release it, we hope to release the forbids hopefully this week. And then the main street is, construction documents are 50%, and they're under preliminary review also, just to get our project supervisors from EDAs comments so that we can leave them into the final 100%. And that's not expected to be done probably till October, November, so. to be done probably till October, November. So we still have a ways away. So this main street project's not going to impact this summer's regular tourist activities and regular events. Did want to mention, too, that Shawna shared with me that the first week in April, April first through the seventh, is Food Waste Prevention Week, that Land County supporting, and then locally here on April fourth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Coastport Brewing Brew Station and Feed, they're doing their part. They have brewed some product from bread. So they are zero-waste brew composting food taste. They also have a trivia based on zero-waste composting. So it might be a very enjoyable activity to participate in. So I believe that covers everything that I had on my list.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Merida?
Thank you, Director Stewart. The state, is that for the infrastructure and the land purchase? There's seven questions?
Mayor, Counselor Merida, yes, that is the three million dollar allocation in Sunville thirteen fifty, I believe, if my memory is correct. That is for road, water, sewer, and storm infrastructure for that thirty-six, thirty-five acres that's intended to be for housing development.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right, business from the city attorney.
Thanks. Here I am again. Okay, so just very quickly to explain why you actually acted on a resolution in order to amend an agreement. I understand that is highly unusual. This is what you did for the Axon Enterprises, Inc., and it's simply because the first agreement, instead of being passed by motion, was adopted and approved by resolution. And we just thought let's just keep going down that road and amend the agreement by adopting a resolution. But just be aware, most agreements will never come to you and be adopted or approved by resolution. So I just wanted to clear that up in case anybody had any funny, you know, question. Why did we do it this way? And why don't we do it that way moving forward? When we were talking about the rules, the council rules, congratulations on adopting those. That is a long time coming and a lot of time and energy that went into really crafting something that I think is going to work for you. And on that point, the nice thing is that last week, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision trying to resolve a split between circuits. The Sixth Circuit had previously held that public officials post on private social media accounts, they could block individual citizen postings. And the Ninth Circuit had said, no, if you intermingle, you look at the account, if the account looks official, then the public official doesn't have the right to block citizen, you know, complaints or comments that they don't want to be hearing on their personal account. So the United States Supreme Court, instead of looking at accounts, they formulated a rule that now is going to look post by post. So I do believe that the Rule twenty-four-point-five, as we reformulated, it is really clear that says, if you have a personal social media account, if you're talking on behalf of the city, you're going to say, you're going to speak, you know, with your city voice, and you're going to say the majority rule. You're not going to speak as an individual counselor or mayor. And if you're posting on your personal media account as a person, as an individual, you're going to say, I'm speaking as a person. This is my personal opinions. And the goal there is to allow you to have First Amendment rights, but also to recognize that depending on how you behave, you may invoke citizens' First Amendment rights as well to post on your personal media accounts. So I just wanted to say that was kind of timely. And then on the topic of the unhoused, what is happening in your meeting that's going to occur on May eighteenth, the United States Supreme Court, again, United States Supreme Court, is hearing the Grants Pass case on April twenty-second. I don't expect that we're going to have a decision by your May meeting, but just recognize that we may be receiving more federal direction on that issue as well. If we do, if Martin v. Boise and the Grants Pass case goes away, we still have ORS one nine five five three oh here in Oregon. But we do have a longer legislative session coming up, you know, beginning of next year. And I'm sure that that will be a hot topic if we receive more US Supreme Court guidance. So that's my report.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Merida?
Could you, are you privy to the the nature of the Grants appeal, Grants Pass appeal or hearing?
Well, yes, it's the case that we've been operating under. It's the Ninth Circuit that broke down Martin v. Boise in more detail and said, you must find room for them within your boundaries. Cars are alternative housing, you know, cars count as camping, so you can't regulate cars differently. Unhoused individuals are entitled to sleep in their cars, in other words. It just added that additional gloss on the need to allow unhoused individuals to sit, lie, sleep, keep warm and dry on public property. So if the United Supreme Court rules, as I expect that they will, and say, and give more authority to local jurisdictions, that that may end that federal constitutional law that we've been operating under. That's just my guess, given the makeup of the court right now.
And it's the nature, it's the nature of the the case is to challenge the current decision of the Ninth Circuit?
Yes. Yes. There was a number of municipalities or League of Oregon cities, multiple cities around the country weighed in and said, we need guidance. We need to know what we can do and what we can't do in protection of our public spaces in balance with this Eighth Amendment right.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. So to be clear, we're not talking about an interpretation or of the ruling of what the Eighth Amendment means in this case, versus limited to the Grants Pass appeal, or could it also, could they render a decision that would overrule Martin vs. Boise?
Correct. Just like in these social media cases where they listened, I mean, those were two differing decisions that they said, you're both wrong. Here's our rule. In this case, they could easily tell the Ninth Circuit in both cases, Martin v. Boise and Grants Pass Johnson, the plaintiffs kept changing, but you're wrong. This doesn't invoke the Eighth Amendment, and that isn't, that isn't a right. You know, it isn't cruel and unusual punishment to enforce protections of public spaces.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. We also have to comply with House Bill thirty-five, is it thirty-five fifteen? So my assumption is that if something changes within the US Supreme Court in the long session, we'll be looking at that House bill.
That's exactly what you were. That's what I was trying to say. You just said it better.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you're saying.
Yes.
Anyone else? No? Thank you. All right, items removed from consent agenda. I see none. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.